Oh, feel. I 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 feel.[71.31][71.31][S01. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any additions and/or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
No changes.
There is, there are actually no changes to the agenda as published. I think the agendas that everybody has a copy of, they need to strike item number eight. Then item nine will become eight, and item ten will become nine.
All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We'll have our motion and our second, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Brings us to the old business portion of our meeting. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held January the fifteenth, two thousand and nine. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No approval.
Have our motion and our second. Any comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item three, consider on second and final reading, ordinance zero, zero eight one, two two one, rezoning a portion of eight zero one Nottingham Drive from CR Regional Commercial to CL Local Commercial. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members of the property, uh, subject properties depicted upon the screen, the rezoning was approved by the planning commission and was recommended by the planning department. We've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion, second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. That brings us to the new business portion of our meeting. Item four, consider on first reading, ordinance zero nine zero, two zero one, amending the Cookville Municipal Code Title twelve, chapters one, two, four, seven, eight, and Title seven, chapter two, relative to adopting the two thousand and six international codes. Sponsor, Mr. Jeff Littrell.
Mayor and city council, we currently have an exemption from the Tennessee State Fire Marshal to perform plans review for certain offices that would normally follow in their jurisdiction, things like assemblies over three hundred people, restaurants, and churches, but we don't do the schools. This exemption helps the project by speeding up the plans review and, and the permitting process, and this allows the project start sooner. The state fire marshal has recently adopted the two thousand and six international codes. We currently have adopted the two thousand and three International Building Code, Residential Plumbing, Fuel Gas Mechanical Code, the two thousand and three Uniform Fire Code, and nineteen ninety-five Model Energy Code. This ordinance would adopt the two thousand and six international codes of each of those and keep us current with the state fire marshal. I'd be happy to answer any questions and, and recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Littrell. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Mr. Littrell, this is just a formality, isn't it? Just to bring us up to code, so to speak, every...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Keep us current with the state of Tennessee.
Right.
Very good. Any further comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Littrell. Item five, consider appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the term of Larry Burgess for service on the Board of Zoning Appeals has expired, and he's indicated he no longer wishes to serve. Um, the members of the BZA serve three-year terms and are appointed by the council. Dr. Paul Bonner has agreed to serve on the board, and the planning department would recommend for his appointment.
Very good. Do we have a motion to appoint, uh, Dr. Bonner to the BZA?
So moved.
Second.
Our motion and our second. Any further discussion on the, uh, appointment? Seeing no further appointment, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item six, consider awarding bid for refuse and cardboard containers. Public Works Department, sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, uh, we recently opened bids for, uh, uh, refuse and cardboard containers. I would recommend the low bidder of Lewis Steelworks.
All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
We've got motion and second. Any discussion by the council? I think the comment was made earlier, what was the, the reasoning behind these going down? I think these are considerably...
It's the steel prices that went down. They went any, down from, uh, a hundred and forty-four dollars to the eight-yard cardboard, went down two hundred and eighty-nine dollars a piece, so it's pretty significant lowering of price.
Very good. Any further comments? Any comments from the audience?
Uh, just wondering, uh, is that...
If you could, uh, come to the lectern and, uh, please identify yourself. Renee?
Renee Albert, I'm, uh, in Travel Cafe, and, uh, just wondering if that's gonna, uh, be the same situation as we have now with the cardboard recycling, uh, the amount of bins that are there? Or are we considering putting more in? Is this a bid for the exact same service that we have?
I'm not sure. Would you say your question again?
The, the amount of, uh, of cardboard bins that we have for recycling? Is this gonna affect that amount, or is that the same?
No, that's the same. The main thing is the place to put those. It's not, it's not the price. We just, it's the whole recycling bins, it's not...
Are, are there gonna, is there a consideration to have more? Is what I'm asking?
Yes, yes.
Because they, they, they're constantly overflowing, and, uh, this weekend we couldn't put anything in, we had to leave everything on the ground.
Well, those are paid for by the, whoever the business it is, so if they want to purchase another one, yes, there'll be another one there.
No, I think he's talking about your recycling centers.
If you're talking about behind, like, a bus, behind your business, those are provided by the, there's some business there, but at the collection centers...
The ones that are right here, the, the collection center with the big...
Oh, with the Justice Center?
Yeah.
Yes. We could possibly put another one there if they're, are getting more.
That was just the issue. I wanted to know if this was, what, referring to those bins in particular? And if it was, then was there gonna be any interest in them?
We could look at that, yes.
Get it, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Renee. Very good. What, what size are those that, that we have at the collection sites?
Eight yard.
Are those eight yard?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, any further com...
They would probably hold a lot more cardboard if everybody would break their cardboard boxes down, put them in there.
Wow, that's true, too. Yeah. Any further comments by the council? Comments by the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item seven, consider awarding bids for annual inventory parts and capshaw water tank removal. The Water Quality Control Department, sponsor, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Uh, mayor and council, we opened bids on, I think the first one's the water tank removal project. Uh, two bidders, Elk Mountain Construction's the low bidder, meeting specs thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and we'd recommend his, uh, their bid. Uh, the water tank project has been going on for a little while. We went about two thousand and seven and started looking at what we needed to do to it. We either, either needed to have to re, refurbish it, it was really setting too low on the system. So we took some, uh, cost estimates and looked at, our best option was to go ahead and remove it, and that's what we'd recommend. We're, I think I got a photo here, uh, what our plan, there's a, whoops. There's a fence around it currently. We'll remove this section of the fence and leave it tied in with the schoolyard, and then all of this whole area will be graded down and grassed back, so it can become part of the schoolyard.
Does the property belong to the school, or does it belong...
No, it belongs to, what you see in red is belongs to the city.
Okay. So do we wanna take that as a, as a motion first? Let's do the, do these separately?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the tank demolition, accepting Elk Mountain Construction as the low bid. Now, I'll open it up for discussion.
Are we discussing both?
No, we're discussing the tank.
Just item eight.
Just, oh, okay, all right.
Why was there such a discrepancy in these two bids?
Uh, Elk Mountain, uh, subbed with a tank demolition contractor that does this all the time. And that's what we expected the price to be, in that range.
It's a good price.
Yeah, well, it, it's what we expected.
Any further discussion on the water tank demolition?
How long does it take to do this removal?
We've given them that, that, um, two-week window that school's out. They thought they could have it down on the ground within a couple of days, though, and then cut it up and pieces and haul off.
Well, who gets the metal or the...
Contractor.
That's part of the bid, is they get that?
Yes. They have to deal with all the issues with it.
Okay.
They'll take it, recycle, and do whatever they've gotta do with it.
And we do have, as far as the, uh, broadcasting, the antennas and all the radio equipment on the tower is... We've, they've relocated that at this point?
It's my understanding they're relocated.
Okay. If not, if not, it will be relocated when the tank comes.
How long have you given them, Ronnie?
Now, they are EMS, builder supplies moved theirs, and John's been dealing with the police and electric customer service antennas, and so, yes, it's gonna be taken care of.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Go ahead and...
Yeah, the next, the next bid is just our annual, uh, inventory type items that we bid annually, and instead of going over each one individual, I would just recommend the low bidder meeting spec that's highlighted.
All right, very good. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, now, this, uh, brings us to our hearings from officers, councilman, and city manager. Item eight, report from the city manager relative to the West Side Business Association petition requesting downtown truck route.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm in possession of a petition signed by a hundred and sixteen, has a hundred and sixteen signatures from the West Side Business Association, uh, and they are requesting that we prohibit large truck traffic on West Broad Street. And, uh, Mr. Sean O'Neal is here representing the West Side Business Association, and I'd like to turn it over to Sean first.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, mayor and council. West Side Business Association, uh, sponsored this petition based on feedback that we were getting from our membership, uh, and from other businesses in that area, and basically, our number one concern is, is safety, obviously. The secondary concern is, is, is the fostering of pedestrian traffic in that area to nurture those businesses and help grow that as a retail, uh, business area. And obviously, if you have large truck traffic barreling through there, uh, and people trying to walk around, those two, uh, items don't really match up. So, uh, from the safety standpoint, uh, that street is not really wide enough for the parking that's there in addition to large trucks. I mean, you can barely pass two cars, uh, down that street in addition to, with everything parked there. Uh, and our members have, uh, have communicated to us time and time again, instances where they've observed pedestrians trying to walk across the street, you know, and, and having difficulties with that. Uh, and I think it's probably a matter of time that, uh, before we have a serious issue, uh, from an accident standpoint on that side, if we don't do something about it, so we, we brought that to your attention. The other thing is the, we've had, uh, at least two cars that I know of, uh, get creamed on corners, uh, with trucks, uh, taking those curves, and they're, and all of those areas are not really, uh, set up for that kind of truck traffic. The petition states that we're not looking to, uh, prohibit, uh, local deliveries, uh, in that area, just large truck traffic, um, and we would leave it to your discretion as to what the actual action plan would be, uh, as far as the route, the alternate route, uh, and the size of vehicle, uh, that it would apply to. And I'll take any questions.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Any further, any comments from the audience? About this issue? I know it is something that, uh, I, I have personally received a lot of calls and, uh, over the last, gosh, probably a couple of years, as we've seen growth in our downtown area down there, and, um, we certainly wanna work towards safety, um, for, for everyone, you know?
Uh, representing Builder's Supply Company, I wondered, question to the presenter, would we consider local traffic?
I could probably answer that. That's one we've struggled with because we're not gonna prohibit deliveries, and those trucks that are coming to Builder's Supply are delivering sand, are they not? Yeah.
Well, our trucks are delivering most anything.
Yeah.
Building materials, top to bottom.
Well, the main reason for putting this on the agenda tonight was just to have public discussion because we all knew it was gonna affect a lot of local businesses, certainly yours, and that's why I called to make sure y'all knew about it.
Appreciate that.
Uh, I would suggest, I mean, I, I don't think they're gonna take any action tonight. I would suggest that we set up a meeting and try to see what we can, uh, work out to everybody's satisfaction. If that's, if that's acceptable to everybody.
Yeah, I think...
No objections to discussing anything, uh, just wanna be made aware of where we're thinking it's going. We've been there a while, about sixty-five years, I think, so...
While, while you're there, uh, could you tell us, uh, what would be some satisfactory routes for your trucks and cement, uh, mixers and, uh, what routes would be better for your trucks to travel?
Well, for our delivery trucks, our delivering out of the plant there, coming up Broad Street gives us a straight shot without ever having to turn to get to Buck Mountain, to get to North Washington, anywhere in the, in the east and northeast. I mean, it's just a straight shot, and where we get it, where we would get into trouble, uh, more so than doing that is with, uh, I think as the gentleman said, making turns is where you run into tight situations, but, uh...
Could you travel Spring, uh, east as easy?
That's, that's easy, um, I guess it's easy, but, of course, I'm sure you all are aware of the traffic that's on Spring. I believe the last report I saw, there's over ten thousand cars a day on Spring that pass there, and, uh, you know, so it's a catch twenty-two. Times where vehicles are pulled up on West Broad up to the curb, and it's not a dual, duly, uh, twin cab pickup, it's really not that hard to get up there. Uh, but, uh, I understand that that does happen to, but, uh, as far as the demos that, uh, gentleman mentioned, referred to, as far as I know, we had nothing to do with that, or if we have, it hadn't been reported to us.
I think...
We're not, we're, we're certainly willing to discuss anything.
Okay, thank you.
But I just want you to know that it is important to us in our business.
Well, and it's not our, our intent anywhere to try to hurt anybody's business, and one of the things about the pedestrian traffic up in Broad Street is that when people are free to walk up and down that street, that encourages them to stay and spend money, et cetera. And, um, in many instances, we're looking here in Cookville to try to bring in more people to visit our area as a, uh, place to spend their leisure time and definitely their leisure money. And, um, you know, I think that what we need to do is get a group of people together and discuss these routes, but definitely look at what's best for everyone. And, um, I was downtown today, and since we've been discussing this, I did notice the number of big pickup trucks that are in Cookville, Tennessee, that, you know, I never noticed them before, but after we talked about all this, I thought, well, let's just have an idea of that. And I nearly couldn't get out of the post office because of the, the truck parked next to me. I couldn't see around it, so...
That's the most, in my opinion anyway, that's the most dangerous situation you have, is the post office, people trying to back out of it.
Yeah.
And in and out.
Mm-hmm.
And, of course, down West Broad, you know, we're certainly not, we're gonna have a closed mind to it.
Yeah.
But it does, it will affect our, uh, our movement and our efficiency, and so we, you know, we...
Well, we need to be thinking also of maybe the type of vehicles, you know, what size truck or, or so forth, so, you know, not, like, it wouldn't be, all trucks would be prohibited maybe going through, but we'd like to have input from all of you, or many of you, who would have maybe some ideas of what size trucks we should be limited, that would be, if they were going through there, would be dangerous, and, and so that's, that's what we need to get. We, in fact, Monday, we discussed, you know, which...
I think there's about twenty-two inches difference in our trucks, for example.
Your cement mixer trucks and...
Twenty-two inches between the distance, the width of it versus your automobile.
Definitely think we can have a, a work session at some point and try to come up with what is, you know, reasonable to, for all concerned. Certainly, you know, the, the West Side business has the vested interest in getting people into their businesses, and certainly you all have, have a business, and, and, and there was no intent to not at all to, to take action on this, uh, merely to have a discussion, and, and certainly we'll have more discussions and see if we can arrive at something that is, uh, beneficial for all concerned.
Uh, Mr. Hughes, your biggest concern is going eastbound on Broad. Most of the time when you're, when you're coming to Builder's Supply, you're gonna come down seventy, right?
Yes.
Cause you're gonna come down seventy, and you're gonna take, turn right into the facility there.
See, the flow, that creates flow. We've got, you know, three hundred yards of concrete...
But you rarely, you rarely leave Builder's Supply and go eastbound, or, uh, eastbound on Spring, uh, though, correctly? Is that correct?
Rarely.
He's telling, he's in the traffic.
The, there's a flow when we go east or in northeast. For example, with all good school, if you got a three hundred yard concrete pour, then you're going east on Broad, and we're bringing them back west on Spring, and it, it fits our entire cycle.
What if, what if, and I'm just trying to think, the only way to get to Broad from Spring is there at Maple, at the light at Maple? Is that, can't make that turn in a con, in a concrete truck, you can't?
Uh, where you, it's very difficult. Walnut, Broad.
He's talking about Maple.
At the red light at Maple, there at, uh...
Freeman's.
Uh, upper common decorating on the left, and then, uh...
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Oh, yeah, we can make that turn.
I mean, to me, I, I'm thinking about, now, we were talking about a long, when you're talking about a long...
Now, you're getting the turn radius, and there's more. You start turning the length, width, width, twenty, start turning ninety degrees.
Right.
You're a whole lot longer. Now, you're gonna see the higher liability out there to run in the car that got pulled up in line, there's more.
Right.
Start turning, it's a lot different from those trucks.
Right, I, and I'm, and I'm just thinking if we could, and just thinking out loud, I mean, that, that right there is probably on, the only place where we could make an improvement to an intersection, where we could widen the intersection, help you with the radius, help them with fl, help you also get eastbound on Spring and then get to Broad reasonably. I mean, if we could improve the radius there at, at Maple and, and Broad, it, it probably would help you a little bit, would it not?
It's still better for us to come straight out going east.
I know, and, and, and all I'm getting at is being, you know, we're all here trying to be reasonable and find solutions, so...
You know, it's not, like you said, it's not to be, you know, we need to discuss it.
Sure, I think we're, probably what we need to try to do is just, we, we need to probably set up a work session and, uh, invite everybody to the table, and decide on what our goal is and, uh, and how we're gonna get there. So, you know, I, I think that having everybody tonight to somewhat unveil this, and the city's kinda put together a, a rough, uh, you know, map here, I shouldn't say rough, it's a great-looking map, our, our GIS people do a great job, but, but it's, it's a first draft, I should say, of a map. And, um, I think that, um, as, as our town grows, particularly in this part of our town, and, uh, uh, I, I can, uh, I know how things are when, when you're, when you say you've been there sixty-five years, uh, you've probably seen a lot of people come and go from the downtown, or, or maybe not you, Jim, I know you're not probably sixty, not been around over there sixty-five years, but Builder's Supply's been there and...
I've been there twenty-two, so, um, I've been a while.
And seen things change over in our downtown area, but, but, uh, as we do that, as a, as a, as a huge contributor to our community, uh, we wanna invite Builder's Supply and everybody to the table, and us try to come up with some solution, so let's, let's, let's do that.
I think we had a couple of people that wanted, uh...
Yeah, a couple of people wanted to...
Okay, yeah, and, and if there's any others that wanna come up, that'd be fine, too. Just identify yourself at the lectern there.
I'm Ellie Lindhart, uh, business owner on West Side and chairman of the West Side Business Association, but I'm not here specifically to continue that discussion, cause I agree, I think a work session is a great idea. But I would like to ask that when the council, uh, creates that work session, that you may also wanna consider involving people who are directly tied to the new park, because as trucks and large truck traffic travels on Broad, it will be going past the park, and I believe there's a new parking lot that's being built, so there will be pedestrians crossing Broad at the park area, probably including children. So I would encourage that people who are involved in the park design and development might also be encouraged to attend this work session. I'd also like to encourage that you ask people from the square to be involved in the work session, because I've had conversation with the members on, uh, of the square, and they also have concern regarding large truck traffic, uh, and because of, of just size of truck visibility, uh, not necessarily just the car and parking and size of street concern, but just because of the size of the vehicle and the movement of the vehicle through the downtown. Uh, so, and I think all of those folks or representatives of those different locations would be very interested in being part of that conversation. Also, do wanna toss out, hopefully eventually, we're going to have the Trailhead of the Rails With Trails at the depot, which is gonna be another group that'll be impacted by traffic on West Side. So, I ask, and certainly respect, and do not wish anything negative toward any business in Cookville, but I do ask that you include some of these other, uh, bodies and representatives from these other groups, cause I think, I think we are at a point with growth that these things really need to be studied carefully, and not just for what's the immediate impact, but what will our impact be over the next fifteen, five, ten, fifteen years? So, just ask that you include representatives from those groups.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good idea. Our work sessions, of course, are open to public, and, but sometimes there's individuals who are important to the, to the issue, are not aware of that, so then we do need to remember them. Thank you.
And I think this, that we'll have to set up a special work session, I think, for this. And, um, this, and you brought up a good point, Mrs. Lindhart, too, that this is not necessarily just a truck route idea for, um, the West Side. This actually does involve other parts of the city here, so we'll be looking at that. Uh, was there any other comments? Please come to the lectern there.
Renee Albert again. Um, there's just one thing I wanted to add to what Ellie said. There's an air quality issue that happens in the, on the West Side in particular. Uh, going down West Broad, uh, in between Cedar and, and Walnut is a very tight, closed, with buildings on both sides, and when you're there in the summer and it's a hundred degrees outside, and a diesel truck goes by and blows black smoke all over the street, uh, it becomes almost intolerable, and it happens, uh, often enough. And I've been in this situation where a customer walked into my door and a truck went by and it blew diesel smoke into my, into my restaurant to the point where I had to open the door and air the place out, cause it, it smelled so bad. So there is an air quality issue with that, too. Uh, the other thing is there's a consideration that we're, that we didn't mention, is that the dinosaur museum, which is opening up, uh, in the, on the West Side, is gonna attract, uh, right now has interest from forty-eight different schools within the tri-city area, and it's gonna become one of the biggest attractions for schools in Nashville, Knoxville, and Chattanooga. So we're gonna see a, a large increase of, uh, of children in the area, uh, school buses and different things like that, so we're gonna have to take that into consideration also.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna say one thing, all, all these points are very valid, and something else to remember is having a, a business on West...
remember is having a business on West Side at one time myself, you know, the lifeblood of a business not only is the people that come and shop with us, but it's also getting deliveries. And so, we're going to have to be very careful how we, how we do this because, I mean, you all have to have product brought to you, whether it's UPS or FedEx or, you know, bigger trucks. And so, we've got, and that's the balance, because they have big, Builder's Supply, for instance, has bigger trucks that are receiving deliveries and making deliveries as well. So, this is a very hard animal to get your hands around to be, to be fair and equitable to all concerned. But I think all of us understand everybody's position and where you're coming from. We just got to get to the table and try to, try to arrive at something that's fair for everybody.
Very good. Any further comments from the audience? Any comments from the council? All right, very good. That brings us to, and we kind of have already heard from our citizens, but if we have any comments about any other issues, feel free to come to our lectern. We open up our meetings to anybody. It's coming, it's forthcoming. And if we don't have anyone, then we'll go to item nine, hear the report from the Cookeville Tree Board.
Ladies and gentlemen, we decided to do something different this year and let you know what we did last year. I'm not going to read everything, but I'm going to read a little bit of it so the audience can participate. A lot of it is what we did last year. The Women Garden Show has a reputation now. People stand in line to get the seedlings. I worked there quite a few hours. 7,000 trees are a lot of trees. And we handed them out, and we have people coming back and say, oh, three years ago, I bought, I got blah, blah, blah trees. They're now so tall and blah, blah, blah. So people are really invested in that, and we want to continue with that. And have all of you heard of the Red Bud Celebration Committee that, okay, that's between Chamber of Commerce and the Tree Board, and that's coming along very well. You have a brochure in there. And it looks like the month of April will be doable. And we're getting contributions, not in the thousands, but we will accept thousands, from anybody. We received a tree planting grant from the Division of Forestry, and that will be proceeding soon. It was bid out and accepted. And the Division of Forestry and the Tennessee Department of Agriculture also gave two grants to Tennessee Tech for our consultant, Dr. Douglas Earhart, to do work. And he created a management plan for the city of Cookeville for its urban forest and a partial inventory of the trees in Cookeville. And the Tree Board feels that the city is losing too much of its tree canopy, and soon we will have a heat island just like some of the big guys, Nashville and Knoxville. And I don't think anybody really wants this. And I'm proud of the growth of the city and the progress we have made, but it has definitely been at the expense of our natural environment. And we feel we need more ordinances of some sort to protect the tree canopy, especially during development. I can, the most outstanding one to me is across some belks. Not only was a stream channelized, you got rid of a hillside, you got rid of lots of trees. There had to have been another way to do it. Eventually, down the road, when we no longer have a tight budget, right, we hope to have a urban forester, not poor Jeff Fitzpatrick, who is the utility forester and is very, very busy. And I won't read any more other than clean air, cooler, clean air, cooler air, and stormwater control. All will be greatly enhanced by protecting our tree canopy. Does anybody have any questions?
I want to just say that I was one of, one of the 800 that purchased a Red Bud tree last year, and I will probably get another one this year.
Well, I hope, I hope they survive. It's still alive. Oh, I didn't mention that, but we asked for donations.
Yes, $1.
Yeah. And people put donations in there. I thought, we won't get much. And people who didn't, even when they got the free trees. So that energized us, and it was an enjoyable time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If you have a comment.
Hi, my name is Arlene Dupo. All this talk about clean air and getting rid of trucks and parking has made me think about my idea of having a bus system here. Is there any chance that we can have a bus route with clean buses and take away some of the congestion of parking and allow people that don't have cars to get out more and be good for the older people and young people and everybody in between?
Very good. And actually, that is being looked into. I think we've got a meeting set up, the 19th. There's some of the, if the economic stimulus package is passed, there will be monies available for transportation. And we also went to Chattanooga and looked at their electric bus system. There are some issues, one being that the density of people in this community is not great enough, one, to receive any federal funding for mass transit at this time, and two, the usage of it, that would be, it would be sparsely used. But there may be ways to have smaller buses. So, it's not entirely out of the question, and it is being looked at and pursued, so.
And also, it could be supported by bus passes and.
Oh, absolutely. Advertising. I mean, there's, there are, there are a lot of different funding mechanisms, but the big one is federal highway administration funds that would help. And without that, it gets expensive. So, but we are looking into it, a very good point. Thank you. All right. Any further comments? Any comments from the council?
I did notice that as I drove over here, the light is getting lighter. It was 5:00 when I got here, and you didn't need your car light, so the winter is about to end here.
Hallelujah.
Well, yeah, I probably jinxed it. And also, one more reminder, please remember when you're buying gifts for Valentine's Day, buy them here in Cookeville, Tennessee. Keep your tax dollars here.
Amen.
Absolutely. Any, any further comments by the council?
We'll accept donations at the city, too, Mayor.
We've got the jar up here if anybody wants to. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we have the motion.